Chairman, it's seven o'clock.
Since it's seven o'clock, we will call the meeting for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a county planning commission order. We'll start with roll call.
Commissioner, Commissioner Griffiths?
Here.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Barrett?
Here.
Commissioner Volkman?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Commissioner Hedstrom is off tonight. Move on to the approval of the minutes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes or is there any discrepancies people would like to bring forward from last month's?
I approved the, how they heard of the minutes for last meeting on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five as an adder in.
I agree.
Has been approved and seconded to approve the minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor, please raise your right hand. I'll put the same sign, motion passes. We will now move on to. Time to move on to new business. FP twenty-five dash oh one, consideration of short form final plat of four residential lots on a parcel of land located in northeast. In the northeast quarter section twenty-nine, township fourteen S, range one E, at the request of Danae and Mike Hauser.
Okay, this is a, uh, going to be a request for consideration of a subdivision named Emig Country Homes. It's going to be a short form final plat. But any, the way our regulations are written, anything less than, proposed less than five lots. Uh, is, uh, can go through the, the final plat process along with a combined kind of preliminary plat process. And, uh, and as, and that's why they call it a short form final plat. The applicant and the owner would be Mike and Danae Hauser. The existing zoning is ag eighty. It's a, uh, it is the proposed zoning and that's going to be under the next case is going to be suburban residential. The way we usually work this, just for those of you who are new, is we go through the plating first, uh, approval. If for some reason the plat gets, is recommended as a denial, then the rezoning is automatically taken off the table because they're tied together. Uh, the comprehensive plan does show this in an area designated as agricultural potential, prime farmland. It is in an area where it is surrounded by ag eighty and with residential and agricultural uses kind of surrounding it. Uh, the request is for consideration of a four lot, single phase of Emig Country Home subdivision. Generally located at the southwest corner of fifteen hundred Avenue and Camp Road. Because there are less than five lots and no new public infrastructure proposed. The commission will review this proposal as a short form final plat as provided in the subdivision regulations. This development will be served by private well and septic and will comply with other requirements of the environmental code. Uh, it was determined by the previous county engineer that subdivision proposals of less than six lots would not. Produce a significant traffic impact in an area, so no traffic study is recommended at this time. If approved, a rezoning of this property to residential zoning district would be required. Currently, all lots show the required utility easements per the subdivision regulations. Lots range from eight point six to ten point nine acres. All lots meet the required minimum frontage for residential zoning. No lot split or boundary adjustments will be approved on any platted lots if such action causes the minimum acreage of. Such lot to fall below the required established minimum acreage for the zoning district or the environmental code. Rural water does serve this area. If the applicant chooses public water to serve the lots, staff will require proof from the water district prior to any building permits being issued. For any primary residential structures. Road and Bridge Department, uh, superintendency, no issues with the placement of driveways. Or the drainage of the four lots, uh, proposed. Environmental services, no issues for placement of a well or septic, however rural water is serving this area. Staff has not received any public comment, uh, as of the writing of the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat of Emig Country Home Subdivision. Uh, on the condition that, uh, and you can. Number one was, I wanted them to include some easements. Uh, that I felt needed to be put in there and I was afraid they would not get them done in time for this meeting. And they haven't, didn't give them to me in time, so you can disregard item one under that condition that I placed. However, uh, item number two, all county building permits, driveway permits and environmental permits are applied for each lot. Should public water serve these lots, applicant must provide proof that the water district intends to provide service prior to any permits being issued. Uh, the alternatives would be to recommend approval of Emig Country Home Subdivision. Recommend denial of the final plat or table the request for any additional information. And I've blown this up for you to kind of show you, they actually did put the required easements in. They were missing a couple of them and one of them was along the frontage, uh, of fifteen hundred and Camp Road also. Uh, there's a required ten foot easement there and, uh. The easement here had to be adjusted to fifteen foot, uh, along this parcel that is not. Included within the, uh, subdivision. And, uh, also an additional, uh, twenty foot easement down here on the south property, uh, south line of, uh, lot four. So all the easements are in there, uh, and so just, uh, at this point then. I'll turn it over to the commission and, uh, hear from the applicant and the public.
With that, we have the applicant come up.
Yeah.
Do I read this? I'll read this after she's done.
Right. If you'd like to. Did you come up to them, anything podium, if you have anything to say about it?
Just, I hope you approve it.
Why not?
I'm not sure, other than what we've already included, the water district has, or the, the water department has done an, uh, an assessment and said that. Three taps, additional taps on this water line would be acceptable or approved. We've got that done, but, um, you know, it'll be up to the individual purchasers if they.
Right.
Want to do a well or whatever. We have both a well and public water, but, you know. That's really the only thing I have to add.
Okay, so.
Can you just rate open it to the public?
With that, we'll open it up to the public, but before anyone comes up, I would like to read this. The public is invited to speak to the board during the public hearing portion of any item under discussion. Please raise your hand. After being recognized, give your name, address, and proceed with your questions and comments. Shortly after the applicant presents his case, his or her case, the planning commission may ask questions of the applicant. The board will discuss those answers. After the board rests, the chairman will invite comments from interested persons for, against, or neutral. The bill, the board will conduct discussion and take act, action if possible. Citizens are asked to limit your remarks. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. Due to the timeframe, please limit your remarks and clear, to clear and concise statements. The chairman may have to put a limit on the number of speakers. The board will attempt to be fair, flexible, and to ensure all those that are interested are heard. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision proposals will go through, will go from this board. To the county commissioners with recommendation of approval for denial. All issues heard this evening will go to the county commissioner, commission after the fourteenth day, fourteen day appeal period applicable. Should you be interested in attending that meeting, please contact the zoning administrator or county clerk for the scheduled hearing date and time. If you wish to file a protest petition, please contact the zoning administrator, administrator for the forms needed. If zoning administrator, the zoning administrator will explain the petition process. Thank you for coming. Your input is always appreciated. With that, I want to open it up to the public.
You don't have to stand.
If it bothers you, you don't have to, no?
No, you don't.
You just.
Okay, I'm from Virginia, I live at two five nine fourteen hundred Avenue. And, um, I have a couple of questions. Number one, what's that going to do to my taxes? You know, um, when you change, change the zoning from agriculture to urban rural, whatever this is. You're going to start charging more taxes and I, you know, I think we have too many taxes right now. So that is my number one concern. Number two concern is, okay, I am, I have a working farm. I might not be working it right now, but what's going to happen when somebody comes in and they want to raise cattle, hogs, sheep, whatever. And these people over here are going to say, oh, this is stinking, so that goes again. And they slightly give one Ron Russell that he is, they closed Martin down because of the smell. You know, we're pretty close to the, to their land. So, you know, with their little sophisticated noses, they're probably going to come in and coast down. So I don't think it's very fair that we get urban rural in there and with, with these town people that like to come out to the country and live. And they don't understand, okay, sometimes you got smells, you have to put up with smells. So these are two of my concerns right now. I might have two million, I need to die.
Can I answer and can I respond?
Tim, if you can, you can address taxes.
Yeah, the taxes, there's two kinds of taxes.
I understand that.
There's the, the tax that you see in your property record card produced by the appraiser. And there's the tax, uh, or not, tax, the zoning district that I use and that this board uses. That is related to the use of land or building permits. So they are not related at all. The, uh, the, the, if there's a change in, the change in classification that you're referring to is a change at the appraiser's level. Not at my level. My level is for permits only. It's not for affecting taxes that way. The, the, the general use of land that's going on right now, so you have residential and agricultural. This would be in keeping with what's already there. The, uh, the other issue that you brought up was conflicting uses if somebody wants to put in something that's agricultural in that vicinity. We have a disclaimer on all of our building permits. And it is also on our website that's, and it's for anybody coming from the city or that is not accustomed to living in the country. There's a disclaimer saying that you have to get used to some smells and some noises and some other, you know, smoke or other things that might be related to agricultural activity. And, uh, that's, that usually covers that so that people don't call. You know, or try to complain and say, oh, that person's doing something I don't want them to do. Well, I can show them that they signed. That disclaimer when they pulled the building permit for a house. So that's just kind of. Letting you know that kind of, that's, that's where we're at right now with that, so.
That idea's changed too. People change their minds too, but that's okay.
Please let him go.
Will you let Kim speak? She's my. Yeah. I'm Jim Gomery. I live in.
Thank you.
Um, I live at fourteen forty-five Barn Road. And I'm probably going to be one of the future owners of that property. Yep. So my, my part is I've heard the water situation. That they can either hook up to a private well or to rural water. I'm wondering, has the private well been tested and is it drinkable water because where I live it's high in nitrates. For Virginia has, it's high in nitrates and it's actually not good usable water. I have a well, but. That's why I hooked up to rural water. And my question is, is rural water capable of hooking up more houses along that road?
This is the, this is the study that the rural water department did and said that yes, three additional taps would not be a problem.
Yeah, but you got four lots that are.
But we've already got.
She's already.
And they're already established in one of the four.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this, what do we have for that little rectangle is one of the four lotteries?
We're only having three lots.
Okay, I thought, I was, I was under conception, there was four additional getting on, by the way, and throwing the load down.
No, we're, we're already established on there, happened three years ago. The three additional ones would not be a problem according to the water district.
Danae, is the other, is the other house next to you, is that on rural water too?
Yes.
So there's two right there now.
Yes.
Yours and the other house, and so there'll be three more, so a total of five.
And so that's five houses on a forty acre lot.
But the water district said that that's not a problem. And we do have a well, but we used it for, you know, washing cars and watering cattle and stuff. It doesn't run to the house.
Yeah, and, and environmental services. Whenever someone pulls a building permit, they're going to do a water test anyway to see and. If it's high in nitrates and they'll tell them they can only be restricted to use it for, like as she said, just for washing cars or something.
Um, I, I kind of disagree with the road handling. Three additional houses on that road. I just went down it this evening, met a car. And it's barely wide enough for two cars to go down that road. So here's my concern. We put, there's going to be five houses. Three new ones and two already established on that, that camp road. And it's, it's not very wide and next we're going to say, well, we need to widen the road to handle the additional traffic. And I don't know how many of you guys go down Magnolia, but currently Magnolia is almost like a mud road because we can't put rock on it. So that's my concern about whether the road can really handle it. And I was wondering, are all the lots going to come out to Camp Road? Are we going to have driveways coming out to fifteen hundred, which is.
Well, you've got the one here, lot one, uh, can come out to fifteen hundred and then the rest would, uh, the other three or other two. The other two would be.
Which is fifteen hundred.
The one that you sent us, Tim, our email had a driveway, all the driveway, well, it could have had one on fifteen hundred, but there were driveway entries.
So there were, okay, okay. Well, I was, okay, so that is mud road up there on fifteen hundred, okay, so, okay. So I, I didn't, I failed to check that. Okay, yeah, because I was, I was going to say that could be a potential. For them to put a driveway up there if they wanted to and if they made improvements. According to what the county wants, usually what we do in situations like that is. Uh, the, uh, the, the county will have like a, or the township, whoever it is that maintains those roads would enter into some sort of a. Agreement where the developer, that, that particular person that buys that parcel will have to put in. From, uh, camp over to where their driveway is. And that's, that's how we usually handle that if that's.
The owner that buys that would have to supply it?
Yeah.
Well, otherwise, I, I have the same thing, you know, we, we raise cattle and sometimes we have hogs. Virginia has awful nice buildings. I'm just concerned once again, and, but I'm not supposed to repeat that concern, so I apologize, but. Um, I, I just, I just don't see what the advantage to the neighborhood is. To add three additional homes. Which makes five homes on forty acres when I thought the rule in Dickinson County was you can split a forty once, or twelve, once.
You, you, right, you can do that, you're, you're, there's two kinds. There's a lot split. Which is for agricultural purposes and homestead purposes. So if you have an existing home or you want to split off a home for. One new home for, on like, let's say forty acres, you can do that. And then any additional lots that you want to propose, you have to come to this board.
Okay, I'd just rather, I could see a housing development on, on a. Country club road. Um, I could almost see it on Magnolia if it was, if you come on the dirt road. But on a little road like that, I, I just can't see the advantage, but that's my concern.
I'm Kurt Marshall. I live, I'm a career one electrician, layman at Salina. And I, I worked for, I'm a Certyville estate and options. I know Mike and Danae and I know Virginia and the camp and stuff too, so I don't.
Any of your team.
Since I've been working with Mike and Danae, I've worked with Tim on several developments and I was one of our own subdivision, we know like Virginia said, we have a four acre beach and stuff on eighty acres. And I don't know what this line is, so I get all, get all that and. So when, when we sold on estate to the rural people moving out to like Tim said, they've, they've, they signed the disloyal trip, but I always sell for sure and keep my business card in case they don't like the country and. They don't like it, so they filled out the first sign up on the paperwork, they decided country's not for that, whatever, so. I guess risk they run. On the, the traffic and part of the main reason, and some of you may know, I'm speaking out of turn here. The reason we're doing this, Mike's has diagnosed cancer, just let me know. So, um, however, just the mag is shut down. So the traffic on this road now is going to be a lot less now with a few residential vehicles and the semis coming in and out and the sprayers and customers have to pick up. All the chemicals and everything and refilling tanks and all that, so I would understand what Kevin's saying on the traffic, it's going to be. We're going to be down to cars and not semis and sprayers and all that, like the business equipment sold, but it's, it's not operating anymore, so. So it's going to be, um, the, the traffic's going to be. We're getting rid of the semis and the bigger traffic, so that's actually going to be less of an issue now. And that's why we're doing this, just maximize the damage that land and stuff after Mike and Farm and, and brother's priority and other businesses and stuff. And that's it, but I got some, thank you.
There is some more comments from the public. I'll close it to the public and the board and discuss. So I'll close it. Close, I will close the public comment and let them all discuss. FP twenty-five dash oh one.
I, I wanted to respond to Kelly's question earlier about the challenge. I, to my knowledge, there has been no challenge to that. That rule or that, that disclaimer that we have that been, ours is no different than any of the other counties, or almost every county that I've. Spoken with or that I've dealt with has, has had that similar type of disclaimer for people who want to live out in the country or in the rural area.
Yeah, but what I've watched, I've seen the disclaimer, but I've watched people that sign that thing go to state level.
They tried to, tried to challenge it.
Tried to not challenge the disclaimer, but in Virginia's, uh, example of Maiden Feed Lock. They went after the permit and challenged the permit.
Right, right, yeah.
And so I'm, I guess I shouldn't say that, you know, more than I'm sure that disclaimer is really worth the paper it's written on.
Well, the thing is though, is it just, and you know what the outcome was in the case.
That one, yeah, it goes permit.
Got a permit?
No, got it taken away, got it cut back, got your headcount cut back.
Had to close, yeah.
Basically.
Are you talking about, are you talking, oh, you're talking about the other direction? You're talking about.
Somebody, yeah, somebody moved out and decided.
And then decided to challenge, I see what you're saying, I thought it was the other way around.
No.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, uh, yeah, that's one of those things where, uh. You can only do so much, uh, in terms of if somebody wants to do something with their property, I mean, I mean, and that's. Kind of a cover for, you know, legally, I mean, we could, I don't know, we've never been challenged here on Dickinson County, my knowledge.
Well, I'm not sure anybody was challenged with the county law because I know they signed that, but there's other avenues to.
I know out east, uh, in some of the eastern counties, I've heard, you know, people have been challenging quite a bit. Urban and rural kind of conflicting, uh, near each other and, uh, especially in places like Douglas and those other counties out east, but. Yeah, I don't, that's, that's interesting. I just haven't, I've never run across that personally or ever seen it. But I don't doubt what you're saying, but I'm just saying it's a.
Well, I have a comment on that.
You know?
I was on the board when the Russell and Maiden case came before this commission. And the question I have is, has our building permit always had that on as far back as we know?
Yes.
It has, so it's clear back to nineteen eighty-five or whatever?
Well, we put it in, in, uh, I think the ones that, that I'm familiar with go all the way back to the, uh. The mid nineties.
Okay, because that was a, that was a two thousand.
Yeah.
Timeframe when they came out, when Russell came out, yeah, so it would have been on there.
Tim, I, I have a question. Um, you sent the packet of information through an email.
Yeah.
And I saw a plat there that had some different colored marks and some.
Yeah, I did that too, so that you could, so you could see it better. I blew it up for you. And, and, it was a concept plan that was originally submitted and they, they kind of consulted with me on it. I included that just for transparency and. Also to help you see the lots because I know that my, uh, little PDF thing was not working very well and I said, well, I better send this in case you guys can't see those lots. And that's why I sent that other one.
Okay, but what we, what we got here is what we're actually dealing with and approving.
What you're looking at, yeah.
What, what I've got here and not what we're seeing in the email.
Right, okay.
All right.
It's, it's, yeah.
I, I want to, uh, thank, uh, Danae and, and taking the time and getting the plat done correctly by an engineering firm. Thank you. And not just bringing something hands scratched in like we saw, uh, in the email. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And those are concept plans. They can submit those to me prior to a plat going before you. That's just something that I sent off to all the different departments to get comments on and say, is this possible? So I would never, that would, the only reason I included it with your package is because I didn't know how well you would be able to see the one that I sent you, so.
Tim, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I know the previous engineer indicated that a traffic study wasn't recommended.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can request?
You can re.
Due to the changing of, you know, use of the business not there but adding additional houses?
You can request it, but there's no, I'll, I'll put it this way, there's no precedent for it. You would be setting a precedent if you did that, because normally with this number of lots. Uh, the commission has never, you know, even historically, even before the engineer made that recommendation. Uh, there has never been a request for any kind of traffic study.
Does the width of the current road have any bearing? You know, you have. Camp Road is a little bit narrower, you have fifteen hundred that's a better road versus fourteen hundred, that's a lot wider. Is there any consideration in, in that in the traffic study?
Well, uh, they, it would take that into account, I, I suppose, but usually what they do is they'll look at the counts. Uh, a lot of counts from like what the, what KDOT, I'll give you an example, it's a, a lot of times people will use a K, uh, uh. KDOT's study, I don't know this, that, I think KDOT will only do their roads, but, and not our side streets, I don't believe. But it's, it's comparable to something that, you know, a KDOT would do on one of theirs. Where they would just have somebody sit there and count how much traffic is going by during the day. And, uh, that's, that's all I can, I can tell you at this point.
So it was fifteen hundred and Camp Road, both township roads?
Yeah, I guess that's, so, so I guess that's my question I had is. That's a township road.
Right.
So why was the township not contacting about this proposal for the input?
Okay, well, uh, I, I told the Road and Bridge Department and, uh, the, what I can do is, uh, you know, usually Road and Bridge will. You know, either let them know or let the, let the township know. Usually the township will, you know, I haven't heard anything from them.
That's, uh, well, two days ago, didn't know anything about it.
Okay, okay.
So we, so we don't know that Road and Bridge has contacted township? We don't know that?
I don't know if the, I don't know what the township is, is township road, I don't.
I mean, just moving the area, being on the township. Well, that is a pretty good, Camp Road is a pretty good road. It is narrow in places.
I'm assuming, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm assuming that word, that Camp Road's probably a sixty foot right away. Most of them are sixty foot, so you got ditches and then you got road surface. You can't go from fentril to fentril with the, with the road as far as widening that out. You can't go from Fenchro to Fenchro with the, with the road as far as widening that out. And I'm, I'm pretty much sure the township's not going to buy additional right.
Yeah.
Well, then there's, there's drainage issues more of there, uh, where it gets kind of narrow just because of culvert.
Tim, is there, excuse me, Kelly, i- is there then a permit for a driveway that's, that would need to be applied for?
Yeah.
Is it applied for with the road and bridge or is it applied through the township?
They go through first road and bridge and then road and bridge consults with the township.
Consults township, okay.
Yeah.
For each of that. I didn't know how that worked.
Yeah. And you, you mentioned the, uh, I wanted to pull up another. This is the contour map. Uh, let me see if I can blow it up. But basically the way it's, the contour maps are done is it looks like you've got, uh, like this, this lot one is on a hill. Basically it's tapers off down here and then it's peaks up here and then tapers down here. And this all tapers up. Um, and so this down here, I think tapers, tapers down as well. But it's a, but the, it kind of gives you an idea. And my, my concern, the reason I always have these is to make sure that there's no visibility issues along the road. If you find the situation where, so if they can go in and there's a visibility issue, like they're going over a hill, uh, for a driveway coming out and based on what road and bridge told me initially, they said they don't, they don't think there would have to be an issue for visibility coming out.
I would just make one comment on your three more taps on, on the real water. Is the main line that's going to supply all that big enough that you're going to have some pressure when you put three more taps on?
She's got approval from the water.
We were supposed to study the main river pressure.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I just heard that there were three more taps.
Listen, I, I call the water district, you hear me? Because I, it's, it's there, so. Based on the theory engineering, I think there'd be no problem.
Okay, that was, and I'm glad, I'm just saying, you know, that.
We did ask.
Yeah.
But, you know, and that's a call that I make on paperwork that we're, you know, I've seen this. There's a difference between real water being available and having a study done, it's not more effective. And when they had the study done, it would have been, I guess, nice to see that in the paperwork, but it's already.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't receive it.
And you'll have enough pressure to do continuously because I know like we've had a future not too long ago, way down south, that they said they did have enough water, but we had to put a booster pump in because they have the water.
Yeah.
They just don't have the pressure to get there. So that was, I guess that'd be my concern, that, you know, yeah, you got the water available there, but.
Yeah.
Three houses using it or four, if they actually have the pressure and not somebody had to put it in the pump or something to help it boost it.
We have the pressure. They're not done the pressure testing.
Tim, if this would be approved as a suburban residential, um, could any of the individual lots be split again?
The, uh, by our subdivision regulations, legally they can, uh, split once before replating, having to replat the whole thing. So.
Once without coming before this.
Right.
You say they could or they can't?
They could, yeah. Just it's one administrative split and then anything more, they have to come to a replat.
On each sections?
Each one.
Each of the?
Each one, yeah. They have to, yeah, if they wanted to pro, propose another one, then they would have to, one would be fine. But if they were to split one of these other lots, they would have to replat the whole thing.
Gotcha.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Final plat FP twenty-five dash O one, ending country home short form file plat. It's the move to approve, uh, oh wait, sorry.
Yep.
I'll second.
It's moved seconded to approve FP twenty-five dash O one, consideration for a short term plot for ending. Short form, what I said, I'm sorry, short form plot for FP, short form plot, uh, for the ending.
Get the name.
Country homes. Ending country homes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Oh, sorry, is there any discussion?
Is there, is there any? Tim, that wants us to split this way? Is there any requirements or, I don't want to put it. Single family house or trailer house and just whoever buys it can do whatever they want to with that.
Unless, yeah, well, unless it has to be single family home, uh, that's permitted by right under that zoning district and all the accessory type uses. So if you want to put up a detached shed or whatever, that's fine, storage. Uh, as far as the type of, of house that goes in there, that would be up to the housers to come up with some sort of like covenants or restrictions.
Do you have any of those planned tonight for that or?
I'm, uh, I'm learning as we go. You know, we, we purchased this land whenever Jackie had to sell the farm ground a couple of years ago with the intent of keeping it. And when Mike got cancer and we had to suddenly close the business within a few months and, um, all of those implications. And the reason that we decided to try to do this is to, like Kirk said, make the most of this one resource that we have to potentially pay off remaining debts that the company created. You know, we were not anticipating closing. When we did, we had made purchases and decisions based on the idea that we would continue to be in business for at least five years and that all changed very quickly. So at this point, he's able to work part-time. There was no way he was going to be able to maintain the business. So we made the decision and we were to close. And this is just an attempt to make the most of this resource so that we can satisfy the debts that we still have. So as far as what kind of homes or I'm honestly hoping two people, one people, one person may buy the twenty acres on the the south side and one person buy the ten acres on the north side and we have two new neighbors instead of three. Um, but I think realistically we need to separate it into three plots. And if someone is interested in twenty acres, they can make that offer. If, if we, if they only want ten acres though, then that's an option as well. So that's why we've laid it out the way we have. It probably would be wise to set some standards. I didn't realize when we started this that we were going to create a subdivision. So that we're just kind of learning as we go.
I have, can I ask you a question in this? If it's a discussion?
Yeah.
So if we were to have somebody come in and, like if they, someone wanted to buy twelve acres, could they buy twelve acres? Or did it have to be ten, one of the ten plots?
They have to buy one of these lots.
Buy one or two?
Or two. They could buy two lots.
They can't decide.
Yeah, they can't just say, okay, I'm going to only buy three acres or whatever.
Right, right.
They have to buy a lot or two lots.
But then if I understand you correct, let's say somebody bought the, the roughly ten acre lot on the north side.
Right.
Once they owned that and decided, well, I'm going to split half of that off and sell five acres off.
Right, they legally, they can split by administrative approval, by administrative split, one split per, you know, it's what the county says per, for that, for that lot. But because the way that I interpret it is that if they wanted it, if another lot wants to split, they're going to have to replat the whole, so. That's how I, that's how I interpret it. That's how I enforce it. Because then you start getting into traffic issues. That's the issues when you start doing.
Well, I mean, that was a question. The north lot sells first and somebody said, well, I'm going to sell a kid five acres off of it.
Yeah, they would, if, if the one person, one, the first person that buys it, they're allowed one split.
They're allowed one split.
But if anybody else in those other lots decides to split, then it's going to have to be replatted.
One for three, for this, one for this.
I read it as one for seven.
Okay.
Yeah, gotcha.
For the plat.
So like the water district would be good enough if you add another lot to it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do the study.
They would have to, they would have to provide proof if they wanted to split that one and say, okay, I want to build another house here in addition to what's being requested now. Yeah, they had to go.
So in theory, four homes could be added, uh, before we have to consider. I think in before the split.
No.
You'd be down to three and then you'd split.
No, listen, no. They can, let's say somebody buys that first lot that I got up there. They can split that once.
Right, and that would be two.
That's the two lots. Anybody, whether it's that lot or any of the other lots subsequent down here, if they try to split, if they try to split again and if these people try to split, they're going to have to be replatted, all of them.
Right.
Have to go through the replat. And there's no guarantee we need approval.
The housers would have to do the replat, right? Since they're.
If they're, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, if the, well, therein lies the, the, uh, the dilemma. Because a lot of times what we do is we'll, we'll tell whoever is, uh, has got the, the lot that owns it. Yeah, but yeah, housers would have to be if they own it because ultimately they're the ones that, that developed it.
So if someone wanted to split one of the lots after they'd purchased it, who would they go to to ask for permission?
Well, they'd come to me first.
Okay, not the, not us, us.
Well, they could if you want to. That's why I'm saying if you want to put something in your, this would be a good idea to, uh, to put that in your, um, uh, in some sort of covenant. Uh, you could say, hey, consult with the developer before you want to split the lot.
Yeah. I would personally prefer that.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, yeah, and so, yeah, it's just something to think about. You may want to look at probably putting some sort of restriction in there on there, you know, in writing, you know, in the deed, you know, when, you know, that's for each of those lots to, to a developer has tried a first refusal on whether or not you want to split or, as it's saying.
Could they, could they put in there the, certainly way they can put in there that say Mike and today, they're a river and I'm on the last and split even if they can, if they put in a covenant?
Right, because we don't enforce covenants. We, the, theirs is more restrictive. They would be more restrictive.
So they can do a covenant against that. They, they, they would have to.
Yes.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, it's been approved and seconded to pass FP twenty-five dash O one, the consideration for a short form plat. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All posting a sign.
I'll abstain. I feel I live too close to it.
Motion passed. Four one. To the twenty-five dash O one, consideration of a resolution establishing the rezoning of a portion of land located in northeast corner, section twenty-nine, township fourteen, S range one E from Ag eighty to suburban residential. Yes, at the request of the name and Mike Housler.
Okay, this is the zoning that is affiliated with the subdivision, uh, basically, uh, you're looking at the zoning requests is for the creation of that single phase residential subdivision generally located at southwest corner of Camp and fifteen hundred. The zoning to suburban residential would be consistent with the intent of allowing a low density, uh, higher acreage residential development within an area designated as prime agricultural land. Uh, the request is for suburban residential rather than rural residential, uh, due to the two lots which fall below the ten acre minimum for a rural residential zoning. Uh, and the availability of rural water service for the area. Suburban residential zoning requires access to or feasible extension of public or rural water to serve any development on this parcel or otherwise proof of adequate water and sewer disposal to the satisfaction of the county. All lots conform to the required minimum lot width and depth as well as frontage requirements for the SR district. Uh, staff has not received any comments from any other agencies regarding the zoning case. Uh, staff has not received, had not received any comments, uh, as of the composing of this report, uh, from the public. Uh, the zoning criteria, the factors for the zoning criteria I outlined that require, uh, under twenty-six one oh five. Uh, whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the regulations. The change in classification would technically be consistent with the intent of the regulations when it comes to, uh, a controlled development or controlled growth of residential development. Um, the item B, the character and condition of the surrounding neighborhood and its effect on the proposed change. The character and conditions of the surrounding neighborhood is ag with limited residential uses. The density of the proposed use would be consistent with other similar residential zoning requests approved in the past. Um, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected. And if so, the nature of such changed or changing conditions. This request is not being made because of any changing conditions in the area affected. However, it has been common in recent history to have, uh, what I would consider non-competitive farmland converted into higher value use such as a residential or commercial. Um, the current zoning and uses of nearby properties and the effect on existing nearby land uses such, upon such, uh, a change in classification. All nearby properties are either ag or residential use. Uh, this change in zoning would have no detrimental impact on the land uses nearby due to the proposed lower density development that's being. Uh, whether every use that would be permitted on the property is reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property, uh, in the immediate vicinity. And the way this works is the permitted uses in the SR district are single family residential. And any accessory use approved, uh, in our regulations for residential zoning districts. So that would be like any kind of like a dash garage or anything like that that's related to residential. And so the permitted uses of the residential structures along with corresponding accessory uses would be consistent with the surrounding area. Uh, the suitability of the applicant's property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Parcel is currently suitable for low density residential uses based on soil conditions and topography. The entire area requested for the zoning change is on a higher ground. There is no zoning. Uh, it's basically a zone X. There's no, no zone A flood zoning, uh, in this area, so no flood plain. Uh, length of time the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped as zoned. Uh, the land is not vacant by these standards since agricultural land is not considered vacant land. Uh, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services, including transportation, exist or can be provided. There is currently no public sewer, but there is water district, public water available to serve the area. Uh, the general amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification. There are currently no vacant parcels with a suburban residential zoning designation within the immediate area. Uh, see staff recommendation below for the staff's recommendation and whether the proposed usage would be in performance to and further enhance the implementation of the county's comprehensive plan. Currently, our plan shows this area as promoting agricultural related activities. Currently, our plan shows this area as promoting agricultural-related activities with lower-density residential development allowed. Parcels which are currently exhumed as Ag eighty are predominantly prime farmland with limited public infrastructure available for development of larger-scale developments, with the exception of established rural communities, you know, such as Navarre or Elmo. Uh, whether the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed on the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by such reclassification. Safety concerns, which are typically addressed for residential subdivisions, are related to traffic and visibility issues, other concerns are related to aesthetic conditions affecting views from specific locations. Which Dickinson County currently has no provisions for preserving what they call view sheds. Uh, road and bridge department has indicated there would be no issue with the placement of driveways initially, uh, however, the, as I stated earlier, it was, it would be the, uh, township board that would also be consulted on that as well. Uh, the, uh, other factors, uh, there are no other factors for consideration at this point. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning of this parcel to suburban residential. Uh, the land is both suitable and desirable for development, which is provide a rural living environment consistent with the character of the surrounding area. Indulgent, it would be the recommended approval to the governing buyer of the island. And included, just kind of the area, and, uh, I'm also including this, it's basically the area that the subdivision takes in, the, uh, I think the housers home is, uh, I, isn't highlighted, but it's also included in that as well. Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I will open the back up to the panel, so I'm not gonna read that again, if that's okay with everybody, uh, just trying to keep me in the time. So I open it back up to the public, if anybody has any more comments, they can come forward, keep it open for a little bit, in case you change your mind, so just a second. Okay, I will close the public comments and open up the door for discussion. I do have a question, Tim, I was saying, do we have the ability to, I saw there was no sewer located, no part of sewer.
Right.
Do we have the ability to determine no lagoons or open sourced?
That would be, that would be an issue for, uh, environmental services.
Okay, so we can't do anything with that, okay?
Right, a lot of times, a lot of times depending on the soil classification, that's what determines that.
Right. Sure, sure. Go ahead, okay. And then I guess I got one more, this sheet you gave us.
Yes.
Is this the little section between this, I don't know how big that is, is that, did you just put that in there, or is that also part of the land being bought?
This, uh, everything highlighted is, is, yeah, and then you've got the housers on that, and they also have that separate parcel, which is that their, their, their house, that larger parcel that's part of this lot here. You see here.
Right, well, I'm, I'm more talking about this little sliver.
This little sliver here is not in the plat.
Well, no, this here, this blue highlighted.
Oh, that, yeah, that's the L shape, yeah, that little L that goes back there is owned by the house, and it would be part of their, their property.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha, yeah.
So lot two can own that.
Right, but lot two, I thought lot two was the housers.
Now, it's that highlighted area.
It's, yeah, it's this.
That little, that red thing is what housers own now.
They, yeah, they own.
So lot two would be essentially behind them.
Behind the one that's not being platted.
That's what I needed.
Okay, I got you.
That's what I needed.
I see, I see, so this, I realize this is housers home.
Yes.
So like this little section of blue right here is part of that, that coming down, okay?
Yes, yes, that, yeah, this, and this, that, that's why I was saying, this, this part here is not highlighted on there, but it's part of the zoning.
I got you. Right. Okay, I got you, I'm, I'm understanding.
So that sliver behind it.
They're upset about it, so.
Got it.
There may.
We'll keep this L shaped.
Yes, yes, I, I was more, we, we have this here, I just saw this
Okay.
blue, and I was thinking maybe that's lot one and lot three tied together and your house is here, I get it now.
So essentially, it's three lots per sale.
Right, 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 I got all that.
That's what I get.
Yeah.
I was, I was kinda had an hour, I tried to understand it, Tim, like, yeah, I kinda keep them like square lots.
Yes, sure, sure, totally got it, thank you. I'm sure that you would do it, Danae, but I saw this when I was looking at maps, and I see it now down here, this little bunker for where you have the A B L, so that's probably gonna be just decommissioned and removed, okay?
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's an old cement silo that was there, we moved there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We used it to park things in and like that, but it's not been functional for a long time.
Sure. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item agenda Z twenty-five dash oh one, which is changing the, uh, zoning from home site and plot land to Ag to a suburban residential.
I'll second. Is approved, been approved and seconded to, uh, for Z twenty-five dash oh one for, to rezone the Ag eighty to suburb, suburban residential land. Is it, anybody have discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. All post same sign. Motion passed for one.
Abstain.
Okay, sorry. Motion passed for Z twenty-five dash oh one for one. And now it goes to county commissioners.
Yeah.
When do they have their meeting on this, Tim?
It'll probably be July tenth, it'll be the first Thursday after the fourteenth day appeal period if somebody wants to submit a petition. And the way that usually works is, I have to get a petition within fourteen days that, uh, from any, from twenty percent of the people that I received, that received notice from me, and all that will do is, is I will tabulate those and determine if it's twenty percent, and if that twenty percent is there, uh, you would, uh, it would then force the, the county commission into a, what they call a supermajority vote, which means they would have to have a unanimous vote to, to approve, rather than just a simple majority to approve of what's been done, so, um, other than that, just, uh, that's it, that's our process, so.
Question on that, in the twenty percent, is that twenty percent of the people or twenty, representing twenty percent of the area?
I would say it's, uh, it's been clarified to me, it's actually twenty percent of the area, but what I do is, I go, I do it both ways, I go by area and by, uh, people just to try to see, I'm missing something. So. Mr. Chairman to ask for a five-minute recess.
Yes. Thank you, too much water, yes. Probably just, but it was hot. I didn't think of this. Okay, for some more. You're on the Z, huh?
Am I allowed to act, or am I not?
Well, you can ask me as staff.
Um, is it public, who you set the letters to? You called the PR office and said?
Well, there's, there's, yeah, yeah, there's, there's actually time. These are repeats.
All right, let's see, go over.
Thank you.
I'll get in touch with you as the, you know, if the day gets closer, I'll.
You let me know if I was.
I know, April seventeenth, I noticed that when I started reading the minutes, I'm like, I did the wrong page. I just didn't, wasn't sure what it was, like, like, forgot, baby. Yeah, I might say something at the end, be like, hey, what a bitch, my beginning, yes.
Yeah.
I thought I asked you. Yeah, yeah, well, Kyle said something, I approved the April seventeenth thing, so I said that to start the order of the meeting.
Then I discovered that I could do this, this is a whole lot easier for you guys to.
Yeah.
That's nice, thank you, thank you.
You have attaboy.
See anything on your page, I'm.
Okay. Are you gonna start up again?
Yes, we'll resume meeting, uh, for whole business, for the commission, with us discussing, uh, alternative energy facilities in Dickinson County.
Okay, this is just to, uh, kind of open it back up, but just to, this is more, tonight's meeting is more to just to go over a kind of a schedule as to how I wanna approach this. Uh, this will be a continuation of the staff initiated review of Article twenty-one to discuss the possible inclusion of language addressing additional alternative energy sources, i.e. hydrogen, commercial solar facilities and other alternative energy sources in Dickinson County. In August of last year, planning commission recommended a moratorium on all alternative energy proposals, with the exception of those sources currently impressed in zoning regulations. This moratorium is scheduled to expire in August of twenty-six. Uh, this gives the commission time to consider and research provisions for the place for the alternative energy sources and their supplemental uses, such as battery energy storage facilities, uh, as one example, and in twenty eighteen, zoning regulations have been amended to include provisions for commercial wind energy conversion systems, and with an amendment in twenty-twenty-two at the request of the now rain power. Oakbridge Wind Project is currently in litigation and scheduled for consideration by the court in November of this year. Uh, the purpose of this discussion this evening is just to go over the order of topics which staff is is proposing to lay out for the commission to address over the next several months regarding alternative energy sources. Uh, the first thing that we ought to really talk about, uh, of, of all those topics, uh, before anything else would be hydrogen. Uh, this will be the initial consideration of importance because there is ongoing hydrogen survey going on right now in the county. Uh, the county commission has also indicated their interest in the planning commission's consideration of this topic, so that would be, that will be in the forefront, I'm still gathering information for you on that. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, item number two, with the, the second item that we would be talking about would be solar. Uh, this can include discussion on both large-scale commercial or smaller-scale solar projects, similar to the D S and O solar project approved just a few years ago. The third item, and the, the third and the fourth are going to be what I would consider accessory to these, uh, alternative energy sources, uh, battery energy storage systems, uh, these are facilities which have become associated with alternative energy sources such as wind and solar, their chief function is to collect energy from the grid and store it until the peak hours of grid capacity, when the energy is then released back into the system to prevent roundouts. These facilities have become controversial over the past year or so with regard to certain industry practices, and those are things that we have to discuss, when we consider those. The other one is cryptocurrency data storage. Uh, like battery energy storage, these facilities tend to locate within the vicinity of alternative energy sources. Items to address on these uses are, uh, their large, large energy and water requirements. It requires a lot of cooling in these facilities, and given where we are at, uh, in terms of droughts and that sort of thing, and potential drought, is what is water, you know, available and how, the main thing to look at would be how a proposal for a cryptocurrency data storage facility would address, uh, cooling and not adversely affect our resources here. Uh, Dickinson County is one of several counties in the region that have or are considering amendments to their land use regulations. Uh, Celine County recently adopted provisions for commercial solar facilities and is currently considering battery energy storage provisions. Staff has invited a Celine County Planning Board member, uh, to the April meeting to discuss the process that their commission has been using over the past year or so. Uh, the individual that I'm going to invite, uh, he's a, uh, an agronomist by trade, uh, he's very much uh, concerned about preserving Ag land and preserving, but also has no objections whatsoever to, you know, allowing for alternative energy as long as the alternative energy, uh, proposal does not adversely affect the county. I like his perspective because he's a scientist, and he, he's, he's got a method that he uses to analyze stuff, and I think that he would be good to kind of like bounce ideas and things off of, and also being a fellow planning commissioner, he's been on the planning commission over there for off and on for about thirty-five years. And, uh, and so he's, he's got a lot of experience, uh, to kind of give you an idea of what his, his philosophy is, said that they, uh, Celine County passed, uh, solar regulations recently. Uh, the industry was trying to tell us that they need at least twelve hundred acres or something like that to be viable, as a, you know, to, to break even with their, 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 uh, their, their money or, you know, their financially, you know, to be financially relevant. And, um, he reduced that to six hundred acres, so basically, and once he did that, the, the individuals that were wanting to actually come to Celine County said, oh, that's too low for us, you guys just need to, to increase it, he says, no, we're not going to, I said, if you can't be viable, his idea is, if you can't make money off six hundred acres of, uh, solar panels on a property, then you don't need to be in the county. And so, uh, and that's what's gonna happen, he said, you, you're gonna have people propose stuff to you and say, I want twelve hundred acres, or I want, you know, so many acres that you know, already, yeah, one of the things to consider, what they did in their regulations is they, they took the industry standard and they said, they you know, already, yeah, one of the things to consider, what they did in their regulations is they took the industry standard and they said, they set their own, they said, okay, we're gonna set it in the interest of preserving ag land, we're gonna save a total of six hundred acres for, for solar, that's it.
In the county?
In the county, for, for a project, and if they wanted twelve hundred acres, they couldn't, they can't do it. Because they've already said twelve hundred acres, these are industry people that came to our meetings saying, well, we can't do six hundred acres, it's just not gonna be financially viable. Well, if you can't, as, as he said to them in that meeting, he said, if you can't be financially stable on six hundred acres, then you don't need to be in the county. You know, basically, that's what his attitude is. And so the point I'm trying to make is that you, one of the things that I would like him to kind of bring up is the rationale that he has in coming up with these kinds of ideas, because that was, he kind of spearheaded that idea. And they wanted, the, the industry wanted twenty acres per site for a battery energy storage facility. He said, no, you're gonna get ten, uh, ten acres, we can't do anything on twenty acres. What if we want to expand? He said, well, if you want to expand, then you're gonna have to expand somewhere else. So, there's, it's been a hot button issue, battery energy storage in particular over there has been a hot button issue. And so I'm just kind of, and the reason I'm bringing him in is just to kind of give you guys a heads up as to what to consider, what to look at. And when you, when we look at these things, and I really like his point of view on things because he's, he's very methodical in the way he goes over his, he analyzes a proposal.
Is that the April twenty-sixth meeting?
That's, that's, well, it's, it's the April seventeenth, I think it's, or not the April.
Obviously.
You're talking about, you're talking about July.
Oh, the July meeting.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't have said July, I was gonna say.
I'm sorry, I don't know why.
Yeah, you got April.
Okay, it's, it's, it's the July, I'm sorry. But anyway, that's, that's where I'm at with, with that, I think, his name is Paul Fennel. And great guy. Roll down earth guy and, and I think that he's got some good ideas, I just hope I can get him on that date, I think he said initially, yeah, oh, yeah, I can make it down there. I think, I don't know, how do you guys feel, would you like to hear from, from Celine County, would you like to hear from somebody who's been through this process to kind of get an idea of what to say?
Had the men kind of come in to talk about what they had and that kind of helped our decision a little bit, what we thought, but, I mean, it was kind of nice to hear somebody else's, that went through it already to kind of, this is what you need to look out for, this is what we think you should put in there. It helped us, I mean, when Earth listens, we don't have to do everything they say, but it'd be nice to hear their
rationale. And the reason, in, in Martin, you think that would be okay? No, okay.
I think you've got the cart way before the horse. Okay, and let me share a little bit of history with the board members that haven't been here. Wally and I have, okay, wind farm. We had a man come in, this may be a very nice gentleman from Celine County, I don't care what goes on in Celine County, we're not Celine County, we're Dickinson County. And we are a rural county, okay? Right now, we have a moratorium with no other energy, alternative energy sources here. We did that for a reason, because we got the wind farm choked down our throats. How that happened? There was an attorney that came in and helped Tim write the regulations for the wind, okay? Came in and helped, I distinctly remember the man because he only had one leg. And they went through and they wrote the regulations and they came to us and, and, okay, sounds like a good deal, we even put it on to the comprehensive plan then. Three, four years later, Anell comes in and starts the application process and we go, whoa, 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 there's a lot of things here, a lot of questions we have. We'd like to back off of this and do more research. We could not do that because we already had the regulations and the precedence was put that if you have the regulations, you can't deny it. And so we were held back from asking questions. And come to find out, when Anell made the presentation down in Harrington, you remember one of the attorneys for Anell? Only had one leg. So he came in years earlier, helped write the regulations. And now he's representing Anell that we can't ask questions, we can't put different regulations on because we already had them passed. I'm really shocked that someone did not catch the positive interest of that. Am I off base at all with any of this, Tim?
Well, all I would say is that in twenty eighteen, I took in front of, I brought you, you're talking about the comp plan. That's when the comp plan addressed it, because after I had started here. I wanted to put something in the comp plan for, for that, not just for solar but for, or not just for the wind, but for all of the alternative energy stuff because I knew it was coming down the pipe. That individual was not available and was not there for that. They tried to, but I didn't let them. The other was, we, we updated our zoning regulations, because once you update your, your comp plan for that, you have to address the zoning. So in twenty eighteen, we also addressed my initial regulations I put together that were passed that were a lot more restrictive. They demanded like certain things be submitted beforehand and they were more specific, they weren't general, the way that it is, you know. And now I made the changes in twenty twenty-two and said, they, they were ready, they, they said, okay, we're going to want you just to kind of make it so that, because the way the industry works, this is how they were wording it, the way the industry works, we're not going to have all the information available for ahead of a conditional use permit, so that can be made as a condition of approval or something like that. But I said, the initial regulations that I wrote in twenty eighteen were a lot more restrictive and that's what they came after me about. And that's, that's what they changed.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I, I understand where you're at, Tim, I am very pro economic development, okay? But we got a hoodwink on the wind farm. I really feel like that this board didn't have a chance to really voice and ask pertinent questions. And why we couldn't was because we already had the regulation. Now, Tim has already now invited someone for our next meeting to start talking about the benefits for how to regulate it.
No, as, as a planning commissioner, a fellow planning commissioner, he's a planning commissioner.
I understand he's a planning commissioner.
And, and he's, and I think that his insight, because the very same questions that we're at in Celine County are gonna be the same questions that are gonna come here.
If, if we have a regulation, we don't have to have a regulation.
Right, and, and, and if that's what you decide, then let us.
I mean, we don't have, what I want, what I want you all to be aware of, if you have the regulation, then you gotta, as the wind farm, it comes, it comes to you. And so, Tim, has anybody done an unbiased study on the benefits, the features, the hazards, the safety of battery storage?
It's too new of a technology, that's the trouble.
Then why in the world would we want to have that in our land use?
And that's, that's why it's controversial over there, that's why I bring Celine County up, because
Then let them deal with it.
They're, they're, the reason I'm saying is, is because they're, they are about to essentially deny a request.
Do they have regulations?
They're, they're, they're putting regulations in place. And based on the, the feedback that people have been getting from the the county commission has been receiving over there, they're probably not going to approve it.
So do you believe that when Celine County passes that and if they deny it, then Joseph Helfer will come here?
No, not necessarily, not, not them necessarily, but I think that they're, you, you
They can't at least for a year.
Right, actually moratorium, right. So, I, I'm not opposed to hearing from Celine County, but I also informally believe that we need to do our due diligence for sure. So, Tim, can you share a little bit, maybe you're getting there, kind of what the timeline is of reviewing these four sources?
Well, the moratorium, I'll be honest, is, it is, is not, if I'm just gonna say this, if the, if the more, if, if the discussion goes beyond the moratorium expiration, it, it, that's not, that's not like a, that's not like a, what I want to say, it's not like a time, you're not, it's not time where, okay, you have to have your discussion done within that period of time before it expires. Well, not of the moratorium, because legally you can't do that, but what you can do is just say, we're updating our regulations, we can't hear any more additions.
If we decide to have regulations?
If you decide that, but you're gonna have to
That's my point is, once you have the regula, now you're saying that Celine County has got regulations or they're considering them?
Well, well, for battery energy storage, yeah, but it's, but the thing is though, is that, that, the chance that like, I gave you the example of what they had over there with their solar. There was a solar company that wanted to move in there and we said, and basically, they said, no, based on how your regulations are written in Celine County, we're not going to. And that's, you know, and so I, and I thought that because, yeah, they are, I know we're a rural county, but we're neighbors to Celine and Celine is, we have kind of a similar things going on, and even though we're, we may be different, you know, we may be a more rural county than they are, we, we, we have to, we are addressing pretty much the same things at the same time.
So if they have a solar regulation, can they deny an applicant?
Yeah.
Why couldn't we deny an applicant when we have a wind farm regulation?
When you say denying an applicant.
Well, I can answer that, right, thank, thank you for that question. This commission can deny the request, but the county commission can say, too bad, we're gonna approve it, I think that's what happens.
Well, no, we couldn't. We had to accept the application.
You're talking about August of twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
We had to accept the wind farm.
For the wind farm.
Wind farm, we, we, yes, I've talked about the wind farm, I'm trying to parallel, they're doing battery and they can say no even though they have a regulation.
But August last year, there was a motion that it couldn't be made to
For solar.
On, but on wind, right, ensure that large amounts of energy.
Uh, we, we, we were told we couldn't do the wind because there was already an application. So we decided to do the moratorium on everything else until we
And it wasn't even a, it was only implied, it wasn't
And we were told with the wind, with the wind, that we were, we were only allowed to say yes or no on the land use, not any, anything else.
What I don't want to do, I feel like we got a hoodwinked on, on the wind. I want to go slow and have an unbiased study done on impact, pros and cons, before we ever consider a regulation. Now, this gentleman can come and he can tell us, you know, he's an agronomy scientist, greatly appreciate that. But is he gonna give us the unbiased pros and cons? Is he a specialist in battery, in crypto storage, in solar?
He is a specialist in analyzing applications for those uses and basing it, basing his decision off of the way that, that are, their, the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations are written. And he's very much aware, just like there's a lot of controversy over here. There's a lot of controversy over there about stuff. And he's very much aware, he's not an expert in, but he's, he's, he's gonna use, he uses his expertise in, in analyzing and saying, you know what? He's, this industry is trying to look like us. Using his, you know, his, his analysis techniques is, if you guys can't, you know, I said, we're, we're the county, we're going to do what, what we want to do, we're the ones who set these regulations, not and that's when there was part of pushing that.
Is Dickinson County a good land use for solar? Is it a good land use for battery storage? Yes or no? And you base that on pros and cons? That's what I'd like to do before we ever consider regulations. Is it really something we want in our county?
So, my personal opinion is you never eliminate your bias, so how would we identify experts, one pro, one con, to show us?
Have him do the research.
Well, actually
Have staff do research.
Actually, technically, I mean, I'll do what I can, but technically, but what I would recommend is that you all as commissioners also have to do your research.
And, and respectfully, we tried to do that on the wind farm and, and that didn't get us anywhere, we had a lot of questions that never got asked. But I will sure accept that challenge. But I would like all to do that, but, but, but Tim, I'd like for you to do work on both pros and cons. Is it something that we really want in the county?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you right now, the joke is that the running kind of parody is that Celine County has more sun and Dickinson County has more wind, we're windier and Celine County is sunnier, so solar goes to, is attracted to Celine County and the wind is attracted here, which, you know, is kind of, I mean, it's kind of But it's, yeah, and so, but, because I have not received any inquiries for solar.
I, I agree with you, John, um, I think we should wait, we should get our own research done, because if we have somebody, I, I realize he's not a specialist, but he's dealing with this, but we have this board has no, what are we gonna ask them? Like, what, we don't really have a basis or foundation of, or at least I don't, on most of this stuff that I can be like, I can ask, that makes sense.
But what I was hoping to do is at least he would show you, okay, this is the reasoning that you can use, you can welcome to use his reasoning or not, but I'm just saying though, I think that he's, he's all for economic development and he's all for, he doesn't mind this stuff, but he says he believes in having an informed decision, make an informed decision.
I'm not opposed to you bringing him in, Tim, at, at all, I'm just saying, but I don't want to be a hoodwink.
If, if, if you don't feel comfortable, then I'll, I'll just, I'll put him off till later on.
Well, we've got a timeline here, now we can extend the moratorium on what we currently have on battery, hydrogen, correct?
Well, two years is the typical, and I've consulted with a couple of other people, other counties that have gone through this, two years is usually the typical radio timeline for it, but just because there's a moratorium expires does not mean that automatically we need to have some decision made.
Right.
We can, we can prevent someone from submitting an application even if the moratorium is, expires.
And how do we do that?
We, well, they can, they, we can tell people, we can say, hey, look, until we get our, our zoning regulations updated, which technically we still are updating them because in compliance with our comp plan and
What determine, what's the point at which the regulations are updated?
Once you say, we've addressed everything that we have to address on the, on the alternative energy stuff and a resolution goes in front of the county commission, one layer of the
We probably have, we probably can't hold it for five years after the moratorium, that would probably, that would look suspicious because
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Okay, as long as you
For, for pursuing confirmation, etc., you know.
I just don't want to be pushed into like, your moratorium's up, you better make a decision now, you gotta continue to go on. We keep putting this off and putting this off and then all of a sudden, oh, your moratorium's up, we're gonna do this one because you don't have anything against regulations.
I would feel better if we could extend the moratorium than you just simply say, instead of we're working on regulations, we currently have a moratorium, but that doesn't have to be decided today or next month. But it's just to be a little bit more solid.
So what about the potential for a ban, I mean?
Well, that's the whole thing, it's, you know, that's one of the recommendations. Well, that's the whole thing, it's a, you know, that's one of the recommendations, one of the options that you would have. Is you can either put together regulations that address it, you can make those real restrictive regulations, or you can just say, we just don't want to know.
I would, Tim, I would like to maybe see, and I know we haven't gotten through this whole thing yet, but I've just seen on here. I know those like mini nuclear reactors are becoming kind of popular, so maybe, not that we gotta discuss it right now, but. I just didn't see it in here, I just want to make sure you, I didn't figure you were aware.
It is, yeah, but that's down the list, right, there's still.
Yeah, it's very brand new.
And the same with hydrogen, hydrogen, even though I'm going to discuss it first. I figure you you see the people out there surveying and I said, that's, I want to address, get that addressed first.
And that gentleman has been.
Yeah, and remind me, is that on county property or private property?
The hydrogen, the hydrogen, the the testing is on, mainly on uh. Right away, right away.
Right. But you still have to have the property owner's consent.
In case they have to get over into their.
Yeah, I got a couple letters on.
Yeah, that's that's.
So they started leasing for hydrogen?
I think what?
No, to my knowledge, no.
They're just, I think, we we signed, uh, let's start to us, we want to be in this area. Like, you know, we're gonna be here, like Tim said, basically, we'll be on the road, we'll have to get off the ditch a little bit.
What are, what are good sources to look at on like?
On any of this?
Other, yeah.
Any any of the alternative stuff, start with. Uh I would say start with the Feds. Because there are the EPA, the uh the CDC, not CDC, uh energy folks, the 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 federal. Uh at the federal level and see how they're how they're addressing it, because there's a lot of these technologies. That they're already well ahead of, you know, as far as setting up parameters for for communities to look at, so that's why I was saying. Look at the, your best bet to start would be looking at federal regs. Uh that address hydrogen, that address solar, that address all of these different things, and the EPA stuff.
That's, federal regs is like baseline, right?
Yeah.
Is we state or sorry, county can go off of that.
Right.
Trumps that, does county trump state and federal, or does state trump county when it comes to regulations of the county?
Regulations, ultimately, it's the locals that have to set the standard, but the thing is though, is because each of these industries has to meet federal standards also, as well as local. But we can use the federals as a guide, see, okay, how can we craft our regulations?
Yeah, we can make them more restrictive.
Yes, yes, yes.
No, but we can make them no.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, anyway, but that's, that's it, and and like I say, um if you want to, I'll just hold off uh. With the invitation, if you want to just meet next.
I'm not opposed to listening, I just don't want something jammed down our throat, okay, and say, oh, well, you've already got this going, you can't turn around. You know, maybe he can give us some insight on the pros and cons of what I'm looking for, maybe as he's an agronomy scientist, maybe he's done some research.
Yeah.
You know what, um the batteries leaking out and catching on fire and exploding, it it only goes two and a half miles, so you only have to have a three mile border.
Well, the biggest, the the, well, the big, the big thing that they talked about, uh that came up. Was uh the uh, how far from residential can one of these battery energy storage things be? And they were, uh the way that the industry standard was, they said, oh, uh it's a half mile, well, we said. You better make it two miles at least from any near residential. And so those are the things you have to consider, and so that's what we're, you know, we put in our ratings, I think it's like two mile. Radius. The trouble with specifically the battery energy storage guys is that they locate specifically within the vicinity of a substation. Uh and so so they can hook up to the grid through the substation. And depending on what's around there as far as how, you know, residential or any other uses that might be impacted. Uh those are the things you have to consider also, because they're limited as to where they locate, they want to locate as close to that. Uh to the grid as possible where they can hook up. And so when you analyze an application for something like that, you have to really have to look at what's going on around those substations as far as housing or anything else. Anything else?
So on your page three on uh four point three acreage limits.
Yeah.
It says that we could consider the acreage cap for solar and wind facilities, what does that look like?
Acreage cap would be, you can say to somebody, uh in the regulations, you can, that's what I was saying. E S N O was kind of a standard that we had set in our precedent, uh when we approved an eight acre site. So if a solar facility comes in and says, I want to put, you know, full blown commercial, uh let's say, make up a half section. Twelve hundred acres. Uh you can say, you can limit it and say, we don't allow those, you can have up to eight acres, that's it.
So because we have a small scale, things don't be bigger, probably we have to meet the cap we have to put in.
Don't have to, but it's a, it's it's, it won't choose that, I mean, that's what we choose.
Eight acres doesn't attract. We 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 approve that without any regulations, they just simply came and said, hey, we want to try this.
Because the reason we did that was because they were an established firm already and they were locating on their lot, their parcel. And when you're talking about large scale solar, you're talking about multiple pieces on multiple parcels.
Privately, you could put up a solar panel on your house.
Yeah.
I can put up the wind turbine on my, for my property privately, for my own use, we 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 don't regulate that.
Right.
So what would the acreage cap for wind look like, what's that?
Wind would be a, like, let's say if another. Came in, you could say that you could put an acreage limit on uh. Same thing, you could say, I'm gonna limit it to so many parcels, I'm gonna limit it to so many acres per, you know, whatever, I mean, you can only have turbines. The 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 project boundary could only be this. Limited uh acreage of like, let's say, ten acres or something like that, you know, instead of spread out all over the place, you know.
Could you, this would be hard to do, I feel like, but could you limit it to an amount for a landowner? Like, could you say if they, if somebody had a square mile, could you say you can only have two on that? Could could you limit it per landowner, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Yeah, well, you could say, you could limit it to like one turbine per property.
That's what, that's essentially what I'm saying.
Yeah, one turbine per property.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, yeah, that's another option.
That could be a option.
But would that apply to the, to make work? It would be.
No, no, it should not, no.
Any, it would be on projects.
This is in the future, yeah.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for the question. About tonight's July 18th. By all definitions, that's a good spot to put three houses and grab a roof. I'm struggling because, and I know Mike and Dana can be. And I kind of looked, Tim, why didn't you ask the township, talk to the township? Didn't show up any of this, was when we had a blizzard there in January, Mike fell at his house. Laid there for a day before we can get him dug out, because where they want to put this to the blacktop, it's two and a half miles. That is the worst place for drifting snow. That's part of the reason why I'm staying, because I'm not sure there's issues like that in the last two years. Now, may not, we may never, we may not see no, and so we're out there for interview, you know, get two back to back.
Right, well, one of the things that I'm curious about, and maybe in the future, this is something, because I, it doesn't occur to me. Because I, even when we talk to townships and things, we don't talk about, what about emergency services being able to get through in certain.
And that's, you know, you know, I was out and seen a neighbor go viral, and they called one of the neighbors, tried to get a tractor to dig him out, to dig so we could get an ambulance there. And we had stuff stuck there, and I'm saying, how do I feel about this? No, if we get a blizzard, there's more people down there.
Yeah.
It's over this major pain in the ass of the township, just because of the way the ground lays north.
And Kelly, I really, I really respect that, but I'm gonna take the other side. And those people are making an informed decision that they're living out into the country, not necessarily Mike and Dana. But but people, the same as uh purchasing a house next to a feed yard and getting the smell.
We know what's gonna be there, yeah.
The feed yard's already there.
How are we discussing with the rock quarry?
Exactly, since that, how, in fact, how has that rock quarry thing turned out?
It's, it was approved, they they uh, they got the permit, they got the permit, but they uh they entered into an agreement with the neighbor to the south. And uh in all of Wyatt, they've they've agreed apparently to abide by whatever the requirements, they entered into a. It was a, it was a private agreement between two parties, but it was included, their conditions were included in the conditions of approval of the survey, yeah.
You know, it's the same, I purchased a farm out in the country beside the animals, it's family, our cattle ranchers, he could put a cattle feed yard right beside my property. And I chose to live there.
Right.
Knowing, knowing that that could happen, and and so.
Up to nine hundred ninety nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, along the same line, when I read it, it is, it it tends to minister report section D. Uh current zoning and use of nearby property and affecting near existing nearby land use, such a change in classification. We have to change the classification out there, but over the last ten to fifteen years, we've had people trade, move in. Families that have been there forever, new families. I wish we could get to where we can interview somebody moving into the country. Because the amount of crap that is on my fields now, it's blowing, I'm finding buckets, I'm finding oil containers. Uh, you know, ten acres, we can have chickens, we can have horse on it, I get all the sacks and the trash, I know where some of it's coming from. I know some of it's coming off the road, I know some of it's coming off the side road, but I'm a half mile out in fields, I'm running plastic buckets. And so, I bite my lip when he said, we don't have, no detrimental impact on the land use nearby. Why do I get out and pick that crap up, that's taking me time, I'm not getting my stuff done.
Yeah.
You know, I, it's, it's, it's tough, but but the bigger issue, you know, I guess.
When I say detrimental impact, I'm talking about delays and stuff like that.
Right, but you know, once it's there, you know, just being familiar with the area, that verbals, and if, and I know Mike, you know, because Mike has cancer. Others thought as well, if it doesn't pass, they still let somebody who will pick it up and do the same thing, they just as well, just as well do it.
Were they farming that or were they leasing that, you know?
And initially, Mike moved in there, I think he leased it before they moved to it, with handling. And I was surprised when I seen it sold, it sold off, uh but I think two or three generations decided to sell. It got passed down another generation, and so they hidden it, they had like four acres up and down there. And like I said, right in there, that that's probably the best spot, I checked with the rural waters. I spent too much time on rural waters, you know, how that could just divide you, but. And, you know, people do, it's good science, mine, easy to handle. That's always gonna be changing, and rural water is always gonna be changing. Well, that's a deal, but the first thing I'll think of is, all right, from the township level, if we get a snow, we're gonna have.
Oh, anything else, guys?
Oh, when I was reading this, uh there was nothing wrong with it, I think I would just maybe like to see some some little amendments. I forgot what one of them was already, I was thinking, I'll email you if I remember Tim, but there is. One where it's just says, it's talking about the applicant, says he, but I can say, it's say he or her, because Dana was, or she, he or she.
Okay.
It, that's just, they're tiny.
Just a roof thing.
Just some little amendments.
Yeah.
Uh there was one other one that I cannot remember right now, that I really wanted to see in it, but.
We can get a look.
Yeah. But I'll email you or I'll email the whole group to make sure that everybody's good with it, so.
Okay.
But that was my only thing.
And on that, I think the protest petition thing should probably be taken off that, and Tim, you have a a prefill. Uh protest petition guidelines to read to them after public, I I I I felt it was a little awkward there.
Yeah.
And it's on the.
Sure.
Put it up.
Yeah.
After public hearing, pretend so.
Yeah, I can, I can do that, yeah, that's no problem.
I'd like to make Louis adjourn.
Second, looking second into adjourn the meeting, all in favor, raise your right hand. At the same time, so. Oh, I would like.